Yes, sir. So we spoke with the sheriff, Major Lenhart and I, and I can report back his positions on these things. He's not in a position where he can speak on speakerphone here, but I'll let you know his position on these things. And it hasn't, it's consistent with what we told you we thought it would be, which is that he'll agree to the enhanced quarterly reports and putting this thing in a call center early rather than later in October 2018, but will not agree to an additional audit. And he will, on the other issue of the proportion sharing of funds, he'll agree to do so if we exclude private donations and federal grants and can agree to the capital, federal grants for capital expenditures. So, I mean, throughout the day today, we've tried to concede ground, but as he put it, he's not going to be the only sheriff in the state to see his constitutional authority and submit himself to a second audit. And he'd already agreed over, to go above and beyond in terms of providing additional finances, factual information. So that's where we are. I'm not going to get him any closer, unfortunately.
So his, and just to clarify, what is his constitu-- you said he's not going to succeed, succeed his constitutional authority? And that is so that he doesn't have to give another audit? Is that right?
Well, Chapter 30 provides, the Constitution and Chapter 30 together provided a great deal of authority to deputy sheriffs throughout our counties.
Okay.
They also provide for how they should be audited and what transparency means. I understand that the county and the school board disagree with the legislature and their opinion on what appropriate auditing is, but he's not going to be the only one in the state to agree to enhance that.
Okay, so the federal grants for capital and that we would have a collaborative effort, he doesn't agree with that? Or you said he did give in on that one and say it's just going to be--
Well, my instruction was go back and tell him that it would just be private. We were back to where--
Yes, just the private donations. And he's good on that?
No, no, I mean--
Oh, he wants to have, he wants--
The ability to go after federal grants to benefit taxpayers in Citrus County and keep our schools safe, yeah.
How would they benefit? They would have an increased service, but they would not have any reduction on their taxes? So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand when you say taxpayers. Citizens would benefit, but do tax, you said taxpayers would benefit?
Consistently throughout the day today, it's become clear to me that my agency is in this to protect kids in schools and the employees who work for you. It's not about the dollars. What it's about is the ability to go out and get additional federal grants to supplement the funding that is available through the resources that you and the county can provide.
How is the supplement? Because you just said taxpayers will benefit. That was a, that's a dollar amount.
If we're, if we're talking about how does a, conceivably, federal grant programs are set up to benefit local municipalities, counties, and sheriff's offices and school boards to do their jobs better with funds that aren't available locally. This clause would close that door for my client, so he is not going to agree to, limited language says that he can't apply for those federal grants. That's, I don't think there's any argument with--
Okay, all right. So he's, he's not going to agree to working together on the federal grants, he'll do that on his own? And my, my view is, not knowing what federal grants are out there, I really don't, don't see that as a fatal flaw, but obviously it's the consensus of the board that that's an issue that we do have, that we, the board does take issue with.
Understood, but I want to be clear. It wasn't, I didn't go back to him with the fact that we wanted to cooperate on federal grants. I went back to him with the fact that the language concerning federal grants was out and all you would do is limit the funds that would not be subject to proportion sharing to private donations.
And he doesn't agree with that?
That's correct.
I sure wish he was here, that he could talk to us upfront, face to face. We could have this conversation, but I'm not really sure. So we'll move on to the next item, and then he did not agree to, or, yeah, he would not agree to the fact that he would have an audit. He doesn't want to have an annual audit.
No, he agreed, he agreed to, agrees for the call center earlier rather than later than it's there and believes that that would be, of course, part and parcel of the annual audit he's required to do by statute. He also agreed to enhance quarterly reporting of revenues, expenditures, and any reserves. So every dollar or cent passing through this program would be reported quarterly to the county. Over and above that is--
Okay, so board, what we have to do though now is decide if we're going to go along with the sheriff's plan, which in consensus we don't agree with, and let him go to the county, let them take that to the county commission and have a vote of the county commission if we were to agree to this, and let them decide, or if we're going to move on with further negotiations to develop our own police department. So board members, how do you wish to proceed?
I'm willing to go ahead and take a look at our CD and E items.
Okay.
Based on the fact that by determination of the commissioners' meeting tomorrow, there is not an agreement between the three parties.
Okay. Ms. Lynn, address the board.
If I might just, two, two points.
Is your microphone on?
I don't think it was. Probably better for me.
Just, if I could just address two points. The first being the sheriff's constitutional duties and the audit in the code section that Mr. Battle referred to. Consider yourselves entering into a contract with a security firm to provide for your SROs. It's, you're not dealing with a constitutional officer, but you're dealing with a security firm. Would you or would you not require that security firm to give you the financial accountability that you're looking for? Think, think of that for a second. Now transfer that to the sheriff. The sheriff is not providing you his normal law enforcement duties, obligations, and responsibilities under the Constitution, because those things are set forth in the categories that we've all been talking about: judicial, jail, law enforcement. Those things are in the budget. There are three, two, three categories, and then it's broken down further into six categories. The county, what I intend to present to the county commissioners is that this service, as Mr. Kennedy stated, that he's providing to you is separate and apart from his constitutional duties as the sheriff. This is something different from what he is to do under the Constitution as your sheriff. And as such, it is not part of his normal law enforcement budget that is subject to the audit. This is something separate and apart, and that's, that's the distinction. So we're not trying to trounce on his constitutional powers, if you will. We're simply saying you're providing a contract as a, as a vendor, and as such, that contract would be subject to audit. Secondly, if, it sounds like the county and the school board is in agreement. At least it's from the consensus that I've heard. If that's the case, then I would ask that you enter into the contract, you guys sign the contract. I would bring it to my board tomorrow to have them contract, sign the contract, and then it would be up to the sheriff to decide whether or not he wanted to sign.
Okay, that's a very good point that I was, I'm glad you made, because I did have a question in regards to how we could move forward with a motion that could be acceptable. And so having that in mind, board members, that is one way we could proceed, to have this vote on a motion according to what we believe should be in the contract. Take it to the county commission, let them decide the contract, and then see if the sheriff would agree. And we could still discuss these other items, and we could, you know, if we have to have a special meeting. Now, Ms. Lynn, Ms. Lynn, what are, what are the chances? I mean, I've heard that it's not on your agenda tomorrow, but yet time is of the essence. So is this something that you could get before your board? If we were to go out on a limb here as far as approving a contract today and voting on a contract, is this something that you could get before your board tomorrow?
Of course, I can't speak for the board. I can tell you the normal board's procedure is at the beginning of the meeting, we have an opportunity to amend our agenda. Of course, our agenda is published, and there's no backup material in the agenda regarding this. This is for, for the county, a $1.4 million contract. I will tell you that the board members in the past have been hesitant to consider such a large dollar amount contract without allowing the public an opportunity to see the contract before we sign it. Having said that, though, having said that, I believe that there will be an opportunity for the administrator and I to, at the beginning of the meeting, explain to the board members the reason why this, this matter should be considered by them. And it's hard for me to guess, but I think that, I mean, you all know the commissioners. I think they would look at this as an important matter, and they may consider it. As long as we're in agreement. If we're not in agreement, I don't, I can't offer you that same level of comfort.
To echo or to affirm Ms. Denise's comments about using the example, and I'm sorry, addressing Mr. Bradshaw, regarding this is a vendor service. If I'm correct, or my question is, is as such, if there were another law enforcement agency within our jurisdiction, they could also be considered by statute as one of the options for us to have contracted with, in theory, if there were other agencies?
If Inverness had a police department, we could enter into an agreement with Inverness, or if Chris River had a police department to cover the schools inside there?
So in the, in the same way that Ms. Denise is referring to that, the same situation, we could hire, we could have hired as one of our options, another law enforcement agency.
The sentence is a law enforcement agency, it doesn't say the sheriff.
So, so we, another law enforcement agency--
If you could strike an agreement with FHB to do it, then we--
And I know in other communities that is the case. And so as a result, I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, is it sounds like, yes, we are asking a vendor service from the sheriff's department, which does change the expectation. He doesn't, and I don't know that he is under an obligation or isn't. That's been unclear as to whether he has to provide that service or not provide that service. And so that being said, I would agree that I think, Mr. Dodd, a very logical option would be then to make a motion to accept a contract with the, you know, with the language that at least is concurrent with what we, as a consensus, have said, to then allow Ms. Denise to then, and Mr. Oliver, to then share that with, with the commissioners tomorrow. They may or may not accept that, and then we could go on to the other items and see if there's any need to address those. But at least we will have put forward a contract.
Correct, that is correct.
And we, and we would, and then, in this instance, my hope would be that we would give authorization for that to be executed. Is, Mr. Bradshaw, if, if a motion was made, would that be in essence?
I've got a contract done for the changes that we had discussed earlier.
So--
That has the private donations, excuse me, I need to catch up. But it does have allowing for the private donations to go to the sheriff?
Yes.
And then, okay, I guess that's--
Me and Ms. Lynn went upstairs and worked with the changes that we thought that, you know, that board had indicated.
If someone is willing, is able to, or if the board's desire is to, to hear those, I would be certainly willing to either make or second or vote on a motion with those, with those changes, because I think you've been trying to listen to the boards and taking into consideration your respective board and Mr. Bradshaw, his respective board. And then at least we would have one that we presented and then move forward. So I'm agreeable to that.
I could read, like, the changes out of the--
Okay, yeah, well, the, the other board, the rest of the board maybe have different feelings.
No, no, I agree with you.
I changed--
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Bradshaw, the only thing, I think we added the "as necessary" language.
Yes.
If, if the, if the sheriff isn't--
As necessary, yes.
If the sheriff isn't agreeing to that, then we can take that out.
We put, we changed in the very, effective October 1, 2018, the sheriff will count for the SRO costs. Because they changed that, the discounts may have found. We added back paragraph 4D, which says, "The parties agree that any additional allocation from the state from SB 726 or from any other source for school resource officers made to the sheriff, the school district, or the county shall be applied to reduce the county and the school district proportionate contribution under this agreement. Any additional allocation received by any party shall be sent to the county for distribution to state or above." This paragraph does not apply to individual private, individual private donations to any other parties. And then the only other change is with paragraph nine. "The parties agree that funds paid pursuant to this agreement are restricted for the purpose, excuse me, for the payment of expenses related to the SRO program. The sheriff will provide detailed quarterly revenue and expense reports and reserve balance reports. Where the funds paid pursuant to this agreement to the county and the school district, reports will encompass the restricted funds paid pursuant to this agreement. Provision allows for the SRO funds to be audited, but in no event shall such audit occur more frequently than once per year if deemed necessary by any party."
Yeah, I think you missed, we forgot the date. He's going to start that on October 1, 2018?
Oh, correct.
2018, I believe.
The sheriff will provide detailed quarterly revenue and expense reports and reserve balance reports, beginning-- Beginning October 1, 2018, for the funds paid pursuant to this agreement.
I'm sorry, someone was in my ear.
Rob, you're more than welcome to come take a look also.
The other thing Mr. Oliver was reminding me is that if you wanted to add some language in there, that the parties would work cooperatively for any grant opportunities that may benefit the parties. We can add something like that in there, too.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I would hope that's what we would--
Yeah, I mean, that would, to me, would be a given, but, but we can put it in.
You can't say anything.
This is, yes, ma'am.
You know, Mr. Dodd, it's really good to see two government agencies working cooperatively to reach an end of both agrees and we get it. Makes one feel really good.
So Bradshaw, would you just read that to us one more time now? That last item on the paragraph nine?
Yes, sir. So paragraph, paragraph nine says, "The parties agree that funds paid pursuant to this agreement are restricted for the payment of expenses related to the SRO program. The sheriff will provide detailed quarterly revenue and expense reports and reserve balance reports, beginning October 1, 2018, for the funds paid pursuant to this agreement to the county and the school district. These reports will encompass the restricted funds paid pursuant to this agreement. This provision allows for the SRO funds to be audited, but in no event shall such audit occur more frequently than once per year if deemed necessary by any party."
That being stated by the attorney, I would move that we accept the revised stated language, as read by our attorney, as approval of the 2018-2019 agreement. I'm sorry.
Did you want to add language that the parties will work cooperatively?
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry when we said that. I did, yes, I did. Approval? This is about the time usually some of yours wins.
The parties agree to work cooperatively towards application--
Application grants.
Application ready grants beneficial to any or are.
That being said, I would make a motion, accepting the language as proposed or as read by our attorney, to approve for the 2018-2019 agreement between the Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office and for the, yeah, it doesn't say here, but in the Citrus County, Board of County Commissioners, for the School Resource Officer Program.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on Mr. Kennedy, a second on Ms. Kells, to approve the agreement between the school board, the sheriff's office, and the board of county commissioners for the 2018-2019 School Resource Officer Program as read by our attorney.
I'm not sure of your procedures, but do you need to also authorize the chairman to sign? We do that.
He's putting it right now.
We're going to--
Our approval, that's usually how it's, that's approval.
Approved, yes. All right, discussion members.
The, the one thing I would just say is that we have the two entities that will be funding this that are agreeable. And I do believe that that's extremely important. And while I respect the sheriff's position, I'm, I believe that this provides a reasonable measure as well as collaborative and balanced amendments and agreement. And I, I hope that all the parties do sign it so that come August 13th, our students have the resource officers that they are accustomed to and that they respect and have enjoyed.
Any other comments or?
I agree with Mr. Kennedy.
I think Mr. Battle, I actually want to say something, too. I just, I don't want to, I know this is obvious because I've brought the sheriff's point back several times, but I want to be clear that what has hap, what has been moved is an exercise in futility, from what I'm being told by my sheriff. So, school's starting in a week, and the agreement as it has been currently, is being currently considered, won't be agreed upon by my sheriff. So I just wanted you to know that in making your decision.
And sir, respectfully, on June 26, 2018, the sheriff has called this board dishonest and disgraceful. He has recently referred to us as bureaucrats that are just running amok. I, I'm very disappointed that we will have put a balanced decision where we have met the financial obligations that this sheriff has asked for time and time again, and there are just a few words that as responsible elected leaders we are being asked by our parties to do, and the sheriff is saying no. So if the sheriff is wanting to us to move to a different option, the two government agencies have stepped forward.
That's fine. I, I think, I'll say this on his behalf, since he can't be here today.
Why isn't he here? Why isn't he here? This is, this has been one of the biggest issues that we have faced in our community in years. And I have said before, when the sheriff comes here, we've had positive conversations, I thought. I thought we cleared up a lot of things.
Have it changed?
Well, thank you. So, I'm sorry, you're stuck with me today.
And you haven't been, you've been wonderful. You've tried very hard.
Let me say this. This is a bit nonlegal, but it's just Major Lenhart and I. In the wake of what occurred, if this board's decision is to refuse to agree on an issue involving where federal grant, grant funds would be divvied, how they'd be divvied up, and what kind of audit the sheriff's office is going to be subject to, and because of issues like that, decide to, a week before school, form its own police department, then so be it.
And let's remember, we are passing an agreement. And there's a good chance the commissioners may pass an agreement tomorrow. So that means two of the three parties will have passed the agreement. And the only thing stopping it is another constitutional officer.
Is the one who's going to perform all the duties under the agreement. The constitutional officer--
Can't be done unless we have funded it and accounted for.
All right, Mr. Battle--
Yeah, and I appreciate--
We have a motion, second order discussion right now, so thank you. Ms. Hill?
Mr. Battle, all due respect, and I know you're the one we have. We also, when you talk and speak to our board about not agreeing with those two topics, and school starts in a week. I think last week, Ms. Kells and the board agreed one more week to try to get an agreement to come together. And I guess we could put that back on the sheriff's office, and they don't, he won't agree to an audit that just brings more transparency to our taxpayers to say where that money's gone. And our board, and our school board, is audited probably five or six times a year, whether it's from different departments, the auditor general's here every single year. So we don't understand why one more audit is a problem when we're funding 1.1 million, the county's funding 1.3 million. All we're saying is let them do their audit, so I think that goes both ways.
And superintendent, we get audited by state, federal, a variety of agencies, and we, as constitutional officers, can't tell them no. And even if one, the state says, oh, yeah, we don't require it, the federal government will.
Yep, I think-- We already had a problem before with the negotiations because of the 96,000 that we paid for the five deputies at the end of the school year. And we had in correspondence from the sheriff that we withheld 27 because he wasn't providing deputies in June. So he, he sent us correspondence, said, pay me the 27 or I won't sign the contract. The contract at that time included a clause that said that they would not put a deputy inside our Crest school. Crest came to this meeting and asked specifically for a deputy inside. So I considered that threat moot, because I wasn't going to sign the contract either with that clause in it. So, you know, he has to do what he has to do, we have to do what we have to do. We have to provide safety and security for our children. We also have to supply them teachers, textbooks, and any other materials they need in the classroom to educate our children. So we have more of a responsibility. And so we're taking all of those responsibilities very, very seriously. We're spending more money than we have ever spent in the last three years on this service that we're applying for. So he'll have to make that decision. And I'm going to move on to see, and I'm going to make a motion that we exop--
We have, yeah, we have a motion second order. All right, Ms. Powers, Ms.--
Thank you. I respect your position, though. I respect your disagree.
Good. Ms. Powers, Ms. Pratt, does anybody have-- Okay, you know, I'll say something, you know. I think the work that we've put into this, the collaborative effort, the, the agreements that we've made, working through the financial side of this picture in order to provide school resource officers who are sworn deputy sheriffs, is quite remarkable and that we've worked at it like we have, seeing the importance of it, and putting together a $2.5 million contract. I have a hard time believing the sheriff will turn that down if the board of county commissioners approves the wording in this contract. I think it would be a hard thing to say to the public that his constitutional statutory right to not having an audit is, is to me, a hard sell. With that, I hope he decides to move forward with this contract. I want the community to realize what a great SRO program we've had over the years and we wish to continue to have. You look at the collaborative effort of this school board with the sheriff's office, providing office space at Luthkutche Technical College, a physical training course at WTC, training classrooms, defensive tactic classrooms at Luthkutche Technical College. We operate the firing range at the, at the landfill. We operate the driving range and allow them those services. And those are not, we don't charge the sheriff for those things. And so having all that in mind, you look at how this community's worked together on this. I think it's a great program, and I hope the county commission will approve this contract tomorrow, I hope. Ms. Lynn, Mr. Oliver, thank you for coming to this meeting. I mean, we're going at it in, you know, four hours now, and we've had a lot of you staying for this discussion. It's a great discussion to have, because student safety is vital. We've always said, we take it very seriously here on the school board, and I really do believe that we'll be able to accomplish this task of keeping sworn deputy sheriffs in the school system. So is there any other discussion? Mr. Bradshaw, is everything clear on your end with the contract that we have on the motion before the--
Yes, it's being printed out and brought down now.
Okay. Okay. With that in mind, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our motion passes five to zero. Mr. Dodd, do we have, is there a deadline on that, so, for staff? For the contract, that's a good question, Mr. Bradshaw. I mean, I guess we'll know more tomorrow at the county commission meeting. That'll be the next step, and then--
By the end of the petition meeting tomorrow.
And then, and then it'll go to the sheriff. So I would hope, you know, by our next board meeting-- Right, well, we can't have another meeting, though, if-- Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have another meeting. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, right.
But, but seriously, so, yeah. Well, we got to give the sheriff time to sign it. So, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm going to ask the board before we will resolutions. Not a police department.
Yep, I'm, I'm ready to do that.
Because you don't have time. I mean, I, I hope, as I think this board does, that we enter into an agreement, that an agreement is entered into, but you cannot wait any longer, if an agreement is not entered, to start, to start that process. I believe the process can always be stopped, but I need-- I mean, we, the, the process can always be stopped, but I need a resolution from this board in order to even begin to move forward. So, you, that's what one of the purposes of calling the, the special meeting is.
Ready.
And especially because I know Mr. Batzall has indicated that the sheriff is not in agreeance with the two paragraphs that we have. Uh, I, I would caution the board and strongly object to y'all not moving forward with starting a, a, a Citrus Schools Police Department. Uh, because if the sheriff says, no, I'm not going to sign it, although Mr. Batzall indicated at the beginning of the meeting that there will be deputies there, you know, not, not going to leave the schools unattended, that still means that we need to move forward or taking, you know, if we enter into an agreement later on down the road, that's fine, but we cannot wait any longer, um, to pursue our other options that are available.
All right, um, I, I do want to go back to Mr. Mullins' question on, on the timeline. Um, so, we're gonna move, if we look at these other agenda items, um, I guess the timeline would be for, uh, you know, hopefully we'll know tomorrow from the board and county commission. And hopefully we'll know within a day after that from the sheriff's office. But we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. And maybe that's when.
Mr. Bradshaw will clear this up when I get done messing this up, but, um, the purpose of item C is so that he can go ahead and apply for the number we'll need to move forward. But like he said, we can always stop. So even if we pass tomorrow with the resolution, you all read to that. And then even though it gets submitted, he can always stop.
And that was gonna be my question, is, is, are, are agreeing to item C is not binding us, it is just allowing the legal process to move forward so that we have no delays? Should that become?
Agreeing to C, D, and E.
Yeah, I'm just, but I'm at first C.
I spoke to FDLE a while ago, and I spoke again to, uh, uh, someone at FDLE this morning. And the, the board can start a police department either by motion or by resol- resolution. Board has to approve their minutes, so the minutes would not be available until later on down the road, that's why there's a resolution. Once you pass a resolution indicating that you want to start, uh, a police department and contained in the resolution is language that authorizes the superintendent to take any and all necessary action, you know, to accomplish that, the first thing that happens is, is that you submit the resolution, uh, along with, um, documentation to FDLE, who forward it to the FBI. The FBI gives you back what's called an original, originating agency identifier number, which that number allows you at that point in time to start the process of hiring deputies or law enforcement and being able to hold their certificate. So that you are holding their certificate for su- FDLE will say, okay, now you're holding their certificate, and they have the authority to do their job because you're in the employing agency and are holding their certificate. So that's the process. So, um, without this, though, cannot move forward. Sure. I mean, we can get the original identif- originating agency identifier and stop it. We can do, I mean, it doesn't force us down a road that we don't want to go, but it's the first step of going down a road.
All right. And I know, Ms. Lynn, I think you had a, a question or something on our motion, or what, what was your?
I was just gonna say, if I get a signed copy of this, I'll bring it to the board tomorrow, and then after the board hears it and approves it, then I can hand carry it to the sheriff's department to, you know, Wednesday morning.
A signed copy from the, as the.
Yeah, well, sir, I'll, I'll sign the copy today, and then they can carry it to county commission. Thank you for, for clarifying that.
Okay. So, we're gonna move on to item number C right now, approve the Citrus County School District establishment of district police department. And Mr. Bradshaw, um, continue on with your discussion on any of this.
I provided a resolution to the board, um, and passed that out earlier, which contains the language necessary to, to send to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to start, uh, the process of, of establishing, uh, to a, a, the Citrus Schools Police Department. They said that it helps to have our name in there. So, that's what's, that's what's in there.
We don't want Citrus County in there, just Citrus.
You tell me, I can, you know.
I mean, is that okay if we don't identify it as county name?
Sure, I mean, we're sitting there.
We can call it anything we want.
Yes, well, no.
No.
You can't put county in.
You know, so.
Who's checking?
So, if you want me to call, if you want me to call it the Citrus County Schools Police Department, let me know, or handwrite it in and you sign it.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Then what I can do is, I can, I can make that change and then have Mr. Dodd sign it, as long as y'all, as long as y'all approve it with a modification, I'll make the change.
Okay. And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with a lot of school board police, um, you know. So, um, I think that's, the resolution is from the school board, and I think we should go with Citrus County School Board Police Department. Um, that's the typical wording for school board police is the school board police department. So that's what I would recommend, Citrus County School Board Police Department. Now, this would allow us to apply for the, um, the agency identifier that does not necessarily commit us to start, to opening a police department. Or how, how does this work? Does it mean we will have a police department once we sign this resolution?
We won't have a police department till we get the originating, the agency identifier back from FDLE, um, and after it comes back from the FBI.
Okay. So once we get that, which is what we're applying for, if we don't need to use that, what takes place next?
Assuming I contact FDLE and tell them we won't stop the process.
Do we know how long the process takes?
About two weeks to get an originating, uh, agency identifier number. And then we can hire deputies at that point in time. Or, I keep saying deputies because I'm used to calling, you know.
I understand.
Police, police officers at that point in time.
Um, April 13th is on our, all of our minds. Um, what?
I've contact, uh.
Okay, that's good. You're good.
I, I, I contacted an org, a, a company called, uh, the Integrity Group, and it's, they run a thing called Prime Detail, um, which can put off-duty, uh, law enforcement officers on our campuses. You know, and I, uh.
So these are.
I spoke to them Friday, and again.
Those that have gone through the full deputized training?
They, they are, they are law enforcement, it's just that, you know, they're, they work three days and they have three days off, and they want to, you know, extra duty. It's extra duty.
So these are not, these are not security guards that have gone and just taken a certification in, in arms test?
They are, they are sworn law enforcement officers.
And we're going to use those just until we have time to hire our own?
As a stopgap, yes, ma'am.
Stopgap, okay. You want to hire local?
I, I understand that, but for, you know, if, if we don't enter into an agreement with the sheriff's office and things don't happen, then we need to, you know, I, I've talked to them, and I told them, I, when I spoke with them, I said, you know, I don't know how many I will need immediately or whatever. But, um, you know, it is not just a regular security guard with a flashlight. It is a, it is a certified law enforcement officer on our campuses.
And I say this because I want to make sure Mr. Dodd doesn't feel like we've, uh, we're totally lost. This is still all, just as a precautionary to make sure that we are, uh, in case we find ourselves in this situation that doesn't get resolved in the next, hopefully 24 to 48 hours.
Correct.
Assuming that that also happens, the stopgap, um, I'm assuming would go through some transition where you would, as, as, as if, as we go on to items D and E, um, as you then hired those, as the development of the police force continued, you could reduce the number of contracted, um, off-duty officers and you would increase them as you would hire permanent local officers?
It is flexible. It has a, and has an, an out clause, obviously, that says that, you know, any party can terminate it, um, for cau- well, without cause, you know, with 30 days' notice. So that, um, you know, once we start, if, if we have to go down that road and we have to start hiring our own police officers, as we start hiring them, they will work with us on the reduction of how many of the off-duty other officers we would have. So, understanding that it's not a situation where it would be a, you know, it's a, we're not committing to a year or anything else, it's, it's mostly on a has-need basis.
Is this what other of those districts, because I know that we're not alone, this is not becoming, unfortunately, all too uncommon?
I know they're working with Leon County, um, a couple other counties, they, they, I don't have my note.
You know Sarasota is, is, is facing some of this as well?
Uh, correct. I think I wrote down some of the other counties, uh, but they, it's, this is not, it's just not our county. And, and I think they're also being used for, for other things, too, even, even areas where if they want to have, uh, on occasion, two law enforcement officers out of school instead of one, you know, the other districts are using them, you know, for those purposes also. It's not a, it's not a bad, um, um, service to have if needed.
When they do, um, if they had to deal with a Baker Act or an arrest on a campus in our county, are they then, is that being processed then under Citrus County School Board's Police Department, even though they're?
It would be underneath, whatever agencies hold it, which is what they carry.
Is that, okay, that's.
I think right now they're using a lot of, uh, FHP. But we did discuss, uh, FDLE, because I know that there's a FDLE, uh, uh, department at Brooksville, Gator Fish. And then I did not realize how many law enforcement agencies there were until I Wikipedia'd, you know, you have the Department of Insurance, you've got, uh, alcohol, tobacco, firearms, or whatever that branch is, Department of Insurance, uh, just, I think, just Department Finance, you know, the, uh, there's, there's a, a laundry list of law enforcement agencies. And most of our, a, a lot of those that I just talked about, they have statewide enforcement capabilities. I, I would read the resolution.
Can you read it?
I can read the resolution to the record.
So, let me just ask this question. Is the timing of this now, um, is this protecting us in order to react quickly? Should, why do we foresee this as being something we need to approve now? Could it be something that we can discuss now? I mean, hoping that what we've just worked on all this time is going to be approved, where we don't even have to go down this route? Couldn't we wait until next Tuesday?
I think that keeps coming on next.
I, I requested this be done back in July, and, you know, moved it down the road. And then, uh, on last Tuesday, you know, that the, the two or three scenarios that I see, number one is what everybody's hoping for, is that we enter into an agreement with the sheriff's department, you know, all of this, uh, you know, all this kind of goes away, and, and we have the traditional SRO program that we've had for however many years. Um, the other thing that would happen would be, um, we don't enter into an SRO agreement. The sheriff has indicated that he's gonna put deputies on campus. Um, I, I believe that to be true, but if necessary, um, you know, we need to have backup with, in regard to the off-duty officers coming in and securing the schools, and also, um, looking at a long-term resolution of the matter. And it would be, if, if, if we don't enter into an agreement with the sheriff, um, what are we gonna do for next year or the following year? And, um, this is, you know, certainly you can vote to table it, move it down, move it down the road, however you want to. Uh, I would say that, uh, that, you know, I think it's prudent to move forward with it now and stop it if we don't, if we don't need it, then wait another week.
I agree.
I agree.
See, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we have a meeting next Tuesday that we could, uh, make a decision at that time if we need to move forward. The sheriff has indicated that he is handling, uh, security at schools. Um, I even think if we start with the police department, that it wouldn't be for every position, that we would have an opportunity to continue with some type of school resource officer program through the sheriff's office, maybe just cover the elementary schools with our police department, and cover the middle schools and high schools through the sheriff's office, that could be an option we could look at. There's other options also that we could look at. So, I'm not sure that we need to make a, a, a decision at this time to create a police department. When we have another meeting coming up next week, we could show faith that we believe that this is gonna be a, a completed deal with the sheriff and the county commission, and wait until next Tuesday to make this decision.
Mr. Dodd, I, I would, I would love to say that that's true, but we just had the sheriff's attorney tell us that this is a futile.
Yeah, but that's the attorney, that's not the sheriff.
I know, we don't have the sheriff here to talk to us.
The attorney works for the sheriff. He does it, he's not the sole spoken person to the sheriff.
But the sheriff's known that this is what we were gonna do today. The sheriff has, has been fully aware that this, this is how serious that we've gotten. And, and I agree with you, I still, I still hope that what we're doing is that this, this is a, not, that we're never gonna have to use this. But I'm saying, we, if we had done this three weeks ago, we would have at least been in a position that we would have been farther down the road. I, I would just say that, again, I feel comfortable that we are not today committing to a police department, but we are saying that we are ready to open one legally. And I think that's where, and other, if I thought today we were committing to that, I, I would completely, completely support and, and be ready to say, let's table it. All I feel like today's we're doing is just doing that. Um, if, if you feel like it helps, I'm open to tabling the, the job description if that's necessary. But I think if we just do this, at least we can get farther down the road.
Well, we don't have any financial picture of what we're talking about right now.
And I think those are gonna be those conversations we're gonna have to have with, that I, I hope that in part, as we're sharing right now, we, we would ask. If that's not the case, we're forming this, we would like assistance. And I think that the county, I did receive an email today, a copy from, um, uh, from, uh, Mr. Oliver, that indicated that they would absolutely present on any options, and that I think what they tried to assure us is that they supported the Citrus County School District's safety for students. Beyond that commitment, they can't, they can't commit the, you know, any of the commissioners, but I think that I, I heard in openness to say, we want to work together. And I think we've seen that today.
And I just think we've been pretty accommodating for next week, next week, next week, and next week. But I'm opposed to, um, not having our control over the people that are gonna be in our classrooms next Monday. And I don't want another $96,000 bill because we've put Citrus County's deputies in there with no agreement. If we have an agreement, I'm good with it, and that's what I hope for, too. And I know your heart's breaking because you were CSO 3, and my heart's breaking, too. But right now, we have to see what we're going to do for our kids on the 13th, and they need somebody there. And if we can hire these, and then we will hire our own. And you, you well know that we have some people locally that want to do this for us. So, I think we need to do this now, and we need to proceed with it. And I think we should put a time limit of, of noon on Wednesday on the agreement, and then just move right on it. We can always stop this.
But we have to have something, we have to put that up.
And we know whether it's gonna go or whether it's not gonna go by noon on Wednesday, that's it. I think we need to do it today.
My suggestion on that would be, is I'm not quite sure when the sheriff will be back in town. I'm assuming he'll be back, he's in Tallahassee for the day.
I'm certain he will.
No. The other, the other, the other problem with that is what Ms. Lynn said, if the county want to hear it tomorrow for whatever particular reason, I'd hate to say that on noon on Wednesday because the county decided not to declare an emergency and put it on their agenda that they didn't have an opportunity to, to hear it, uh, so.
Well, we can always stop this, depending upon, you know, a reasonable period of time that I think we need to proceed with this and that, put our own people in there on Monday the 13th until it's resolved and signed.
What do you need from us?
I guess you need to move to approve it, then I'll read it, and then, uh, and then if that works, then you can move to, you can, uh, vote on it and, and move forward with it.
I'm going to approve the Citrus County School District's establishment of a district police department. Second?
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second, and then Ms. Kelts to approve. We have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Kells to approve Citrus County School Board Police Department.
So I'll read the resolution then. It's Citrus County Florida Resolution 1801, Resolution Designating Commissioning School Safety Officer. Resolution of the School Board of Citrus County, Florida Designating and Commissioning a School Safety Officer pursuant to Section 1006.12 Florida Statute and authorized and directing the superintendent of the school on behalf of the school board as employing agency to take such actions that are necessary or appropriate to comply with the provisions of Chapter 943 Florida Statute to effectuate the intended purposes of this resolution. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida is authorized pursuant to Section 1006.12 Florida Statute to commission one or more school safety officers for protection and safety of school personnel, property, and students within the school district. Whereas the statute authorized the superintendent to recommend that the school board may appoint one or more school safety officers in whereas it is intended by the School Board as employing agency for the purpose of Chapter 43 Florida Statutes that an originating agency identifier be obtained from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to enable the school safety officer to have access to such criminal records and other information as may be available by virtue of the issuance of the originating agency identifier. And whereas the school board intends to take all actions necessary to establish the Citrus County School Board Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Citrus County, Florida that the Citrus County School Board Police Department is hereby established. The superintendent of schools be and hereby is authorized and directed to take such actions as are necessary or appropriate to comply with the provisions of Chapter 943 Florida Statutes and to effectuate the intended purposes of this resolution. The superintendent shall on behalf of the school board as employing agency apply for and obtain an originating agency identifier from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. The superintendent is authorized and directed to take such other and further action as they, as they do necessary or appropriate to effectuate the intended purpose of the resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. The resolution has been adopted by a blank vote of the School Board of Citrus County, Florida at its specially scheduled meeting held this sixth day of August 2018.
Okay, there's the resolution. Questions or comments?
Just, do you need any direction for these minutes to be expedited?
I can use the resolution, so I'll have, if it's passed, I'll have Mr. Dodd and Ms. Hill and myself execute the resolution in triplicate and then I can use one of those to be forwarded to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement.
Anything else, any other questions? You know, I, I still just have a difficult time with this considering the timing of everything we're at right now. And this, I just want to make sure it's clear, we're not funding a school board police department, though, are we?
Correct.
This doesn't fund anything. Right. So we're not hiring any people regarding this resolution. We're just applying, because I noticed, you know, on the, the other information, job descriptions, there's information, financial information there. You know, we can table those, but I don't, I mean, there's.
I'm not suggesting table those because if this does not work out and you need to hire someone, you need to have a job description available to be able to hire someone.
But could we delay, I know it's, I know that it wouldn't be as perfect to the desire, but could we in hopes delay that to next week's meeting?
If you would like to delay anything, it may be the job description for the police officer. I would not delay the job description for the police chief because I think that's one part of the information that I need to send to FDLE.
I still would go ahead and okay both of them. Again, we don't have to use them, hopefully we won't, but if we do, they're in place.
The, the motion right now deals with the resolution, so, you know, again, I would rather wait until next Tuesday to pursue the resolution and so I'm not going to support the motion, but that's, those are my comments. Is there any other comments?
On the resolution?
On the resolution. On the motion on the resolution. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Nay. The motion passes four to one. Okay, item, the next item on the agenda is the job description for district police chief.
Per the attorney's needs to expedite the resolution, because of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the job description for district police chief.
Second?
All right, we have a motion, a second, a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Kells to approve the job description. Now, I have some questions on this with the qualifications. These are very minimal, so I wanted to know where these qualifications came from.
We took into consideration the other districts and what qualifications they had for district police chief and the district, and the SRO position as well.
And which districts did you look at?
I would, Jackson County.
Jackson County? Well, I got to tell you, these qualifications are too minimal for me to support right now. They're just, this is not, this is not a document for me to approve knowing what the requirements are for a police chief and, you know, can't support it.
Is there anything from Mr. Dodd though, even if you're not going to support it, that you could say that you feel like minimumly we should add in if it does get approved today? And again, I'm not saying that it would change your support for it, but I'm trying to make sure if that's, anything needs to get included, I'd be willing to.
Well, first of all, there's no way an associate's degree is enough for a school, a school board police chief in this day and age when all our other professionals in the district have at least a bachelor's degree. It's a minimum that they have to have a bachelor's degree. To be a chief of police, that would be a minimum. You know, there has to be a reference to management training. There has to be some specific management training course that they've been to in executive law enforcement, to be a law enforcement executive. That would be a mandate. There's no mention about crime prevention, crime prevention through environmental design. There's no mention at all about the need for someone to have experience in that field. You say you're going to have or obtain a school resource officer training within a specified period of time. There are several school resource officer courses. There's a practitioner designation. That's not just a basic 40-hour course. Those should be considered or at least recommended for. We want someone, if they're going to run a school board police department that has experience. We want someone that knows what they're doing. To start a police agency is a major undertaking. You have to understand there is a lot that goes into the requirements by law from evidentiary requirements at evidence room to firearms, to high liability training certifications. All those things are going to be, have to be done by a chief of police. He's going to have to set up the entire policy structure, the police officer's bill of rights. This is a totally different HR game than what, anything that we're used to here. This is why that person has to have knowledge and a background in HR or in something, at least with the police officer's bill of rights. There has to be internal affairs investigations, it has to be, all these policies are going to have to be in place. This, these qualifications, if we're hiring a security, a guy to oversee security, I might go for this, but not a law enforcement agency that brings a lot of liability onto this school board on the way people are handled and treated and when arrests are made and people are deprived their right of freedom and when property is seized, those are all things that have to be clear and we have to have someone that has the knowledge of those items. There's nothing dealing with accreditation, there's nothing, I mean, that's a policy procedure issue. Those are things that there has to be knowledge of in this, for this person to be a police chief. I'm not talking about a police officer. I'm talking about the lead executive, the chief.
I'm trying to write as quickly as I can some of what you were saying and I don't, I don't disagree with any of that.
I don't either. We've got a plan.
If you can operate back, we can bring back the.
Absolutely.
Job description on Tuesday.
Yeah, good afternoon. If you don't, if you don't mind, I would like to ask the board, how about this, if this is amiable to Mr. Bradshaw, we will table the job descriptions, we will go back and reconstruct those and bring them to you next Tuesday, next Tuesday's board meeting. And certainly we have the wealth of knowledge here on the board and I would ask HR staff to include Mr. Dodd in the construct of those job descriptions.
And if Mr. Bradshaw wanted to send that in, he could have the note that's going forward for your board for the job descriptions.
That's a good idea. Many points. You have to have a lot of experience.
I was just going to say, well, I was going to say for a proper procedure, I think it's now the chairperson, so do I, do we need to table it? Do I withdraw my motion?
Can I ask the board to table both of them, the police officer and the chief, and we'll move next week?
I already made an emotion and it was seconded, so it's actually his at this point, I think.
So I think you can go to the table until next week.
Then I move to table this until Tuesday or somebody else does.
Is there a motion? All right, Ms. Powers has made a motion to table, and a second, is that a second, Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Bryant to table this for the Tuesday meeting. Is there any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Now, we have not brought up the district police officer, but I guess we just pull back the table.
Move the table.
Move the table. All right, motion to table by Mr. Kennedy, is there a second? Second by Ms. Bryant to table the job description for district police officer. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion also passes five zero. I did, thank you, Mr. Christian. Attorney, we're going to go on to the next item, Attorney in Legal Matters, and we'll ask for an opportunity for public comment should there be any right after the attorneys in legal matters.
I believe I spoke.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Is anyone in the eye to address the board?
Just because I like to talk so much.
All right.
Not really. Hey, I just want to touch base and you've done some of it already, but if you're talking about a campus police, man, I got a vested interest in it. I have kids, raised them up here, still got some. There's a lot that goes along with it. Doug mentioned on several things, but there's a lot to it. You open up your own police force and you're going to have to be self-sufficient. There's a lot going on with just running a police agency and that's what you're going to have to be. You're going to have to accept the responsibilities that go along with it. I'll touch on just one thing, I'm not going to waste a whole pile of time, but even if you're talking about evidentiary value, you're talking about any type of crime that happens on the school campuses, it is in your jurisdiction. It is in no one else's jurisdiction, it's in yours. So therefore you have to investigate it, you have to work the crime. If it takes you off campus, you're out of your jurisdiction now. So you have a theft that occurs on campus, it leaves campus, it's somebody's cell phone, they tracked the cell phone, now it's out, out in the county somewhere, I don't know how you're going to do it because now you're out of your jurisdiction, the rest, the rest has to be made at some point unless you're going to push it off. You get a sexual assault on campus, it's in a car, what are you going to do with your evidence? How are you going to process your evidence? Are you going to have an evidence garage? Are you going to have the equipment to process the piece of evidence? Are you going to have lumolites, fuming chambers, naphydrin chambers, even in the simplicity of dusting for a print? Get a print, put it on a card, who are you going to send it to, FDLE? You're going to have a six-month turnaround getting it back. So if you're counting on a lot of that, I just want to caution you, if you're going to put your own police agency together, there's a lot more to it. You have to have, you have to have a self-sufficient police agency. That's what you're calling yourself. You know, I just, I just wrote down a few notes while you guys were talking about it, even the evidence tracking in a QTEL system like we have, how many pieces of evidence you got in there, where are they at? You may not have a lot at the beginning, but you will in the end. We carry about 30,000 items. You got to get rid of them too. So there's a process for getting rid of them. And there's a lot of expensive equipment to go along with processing evidence. I'm not saying FDLE won't do it for you, I'm just telling you it's not fast. We are pretty much self-sufficient in our agency and have become that way. So I just kind of want to bring up those points to you. I know you guys have a decision to make. We are part of this process. Like I said, we have a vested interest, we have a great SRO program and we have a great agency. And we do things well. So if you do, if you do decide to do a police department, I hope you think along those same lines too because it really matters to me.
All right. Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, none, that will conclude our public comment time here. We're going to go to any other business that needs to come before the school board. Mr. Mullin.
Hey.
Ms. Bryant. Powers.
I enjoyed the Purple Heart Breakfast.
Oh, yes.
School Board was recognized as being a Purple Heart School Board and we got some compliments, that was nice.
I just want to thank, I want to thank the commission for coming today through Ms. Denise and Mr. Oliver. It was extremely helpful. Mr. Dodd, I want to commend you for having one of probably the most challenging days since you've served. And I don't want you to think that this board is not greatly appreciative of this community and as a parent, I am for your insight, your service, and the direction and leadership you're going to continue to take us. I am still praying that this is resolved. I think that, that every point that's been brought up, every concern that you have, Mr. Dodd, concerns that were just discussed, they're valid, they are very valid. I don't think there's one person on this board or in this executive team that doesn't hope that what happens is that our sheriff says, I'm there. So I hope that's where we're at, but at some point, we can't just not have a Plan B and I hope we don't have to use Plan B. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all right. Ms. Powers, I know you're scheduled to be at the Wednesday's Value Adjustment Board meeting, I won't be there, and so I appreciate you covering that base and I think they sent you the agenda, maybe? Did you get the agenda? Okay, very good. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Seeing that, before I adjourn the meeting, I will announce that our regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday. We want all of you to come back to that meeting, all right? Our meeting.
Hey, please, please consider.